We're going to call this meeting to order. Will you first please join us in a salute to our nation's flag?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Carol, roll call, please.
Supervisor Guizio.
Here.
Supervisor Barney.
Here.
Supervisor Fisher.
Here.
Supervisor Chafoni.
Here.
Supervisor Cassiolo.
Here. In addition Township Manager Don Januso, Assistant Manager and Director of Planning Jack King, Chief of Police Sean Bukowinski, Director of Public Works Bill Botoroff, our Director at Southbridge EMS Dan Miller, our Interim Fire Chief Ted Wolford, our Township Engineer Dan Dizeroth, and our Township Solicitor Gretchen Moore. At this time, wait, I just got to turn this off, please. This time we will take comments from any of the residents have something on an agenda item. If you have a question or comment, please feel free to make it now on our agenda items. Anything? I'm not insisting.
Kelly started it. It looks like you're going to vote on the Karen Drive with some agreement. I'm just...
It looks like it'll be a contingent agreement. I mean, a contingent approval.
Can you explain what the agreement is?
Yes, yes. What do you mean it's the best you can do? What happened?
We're down to one microphone they have here. You just have to reach over and talk into it.
All right, we'll get, we'll bring it over when the residents come up. Just some announcements. I want to mention we had an executive session with my board on Thursday, May 16th at 7:00 PM discussing oil and gas issues with our solicitor. Our Cecil Township Parks and Recreation Board will sponsor a movie night on Saturday, June 8th, beginning at dusk in the park. I guess they said the movie has yet to be determined, but I'm sure it'll be a good one. The Cecil Township Historic Society will hold a meeting on Wednesday, June 19th at 7:00 PM here in the meeting room. Their President Jim Zamiska and our member Kathy Pigford will present the Cecil Township Jail. So there's a good history and I'm sure that'd be very interesting to learn about. They are trying to raise money to refurbish it. Also, our Muse Fireworks will be on February 5th at the Muse Ball Field, I guess, at dark.
July 12.
I'm sorry, July 5th, sorry. And there will be a flag retirement ceremony on Saturday, July 13th at the Cecil American Legion, beginning at 6:30. It's, it is sponsored by the American Legion and the Boy Scout Troop 1369. First of all, some staff reports. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just two items. The training has been complete and the new digital sign in front of the building is fully functional and we'll be placing our notices rather regularly on that new system. I continue work with our insurance carriers regarding equipment losses from the flooding at the Public Works Garage on April 11th. You'll see that there are items number 155 and 156 on your agenda. These are essential items to that department which were lost in the flood. All I can hope is that through one or two of those carriers, we have some replacement value, but there's a lot of hoops to jump through. But I will, of course, keep the board apprised of any changes or any updates in those flood insurance policies. That's all I have.
While you're at it, we have an agenda item on the new equipment for the room. You want to just describe what we're getting?
Actually, Bill's probably better off. You talking about the new Kubota for the Parks Department?
No, no, the...
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Also, yes, as, as necessary and much needed, we're replacing the entire audio and video system in this room. Aged equipment and as that technology changes, parts and services are no longer available for the current equipment that we have in this room. So hopefully that installation will take place later this week. So although it won't be functional and up in our operational, excuse me for the oil and gas hearing, it should be ready in time for our next July BOS meeting.
Thank you, Don.
Sure.
Sean, please report.
Good evening, everybody. Last month, the police department participated and assisted with the Memorial Day Services in Cecil Township and at the National Cemetery. We also gave a tour of the police department to the Girl Scouts. That's all.
That's all?
You told me to keep it short.
I did not.
I'm sorry you didn't.
All right. Jack, you have anything on building?
Mr. Chairman, Planning Commission, pickleball is moving along. I think they covered a couple of big holes, one of which had to deal with sprinkling the entire building and the courts. 275 Technology has a revision, as does Alta Piano. Both those revisions are moving along as well. Silver Creek will be starting soon. A long time coming for that housing plan off Rising Road. Great news, McConnell's Trails is sold out and almost built out. So they're going to be wrapping up that housing project soon. GSL landscaping on Morganza will begin construction shortly, probably this July. Is it Dan? Do you know?
Yes.
July.
GSL, they...
And Muse Elementary Playground will begin construction shortly as well.
That's good to hear. Thank you, Jack. Bill, anything with Public Works?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a few things that I'd like to mention late on the agenda. The item 157-2024 is a long time coming for this department and the Parks and Recreation. This is a utility that has a dump bed on the back of it will make picking up garbage at the pavilions on a daily basis much easier. And also it keeps us from borrowing equipment from neighboring townships and boroughs. And we'll use this during the fall festivals to unload trash. It's got a dump bed in the back, so it could be a very piece, a very handy piece of equipment to have over the park. Currently, we're using our zero steers with small tow behind lawn tractor trailers and you can't get maybe two or three bags of trash in there and then you're back emptying it again. So again, I would appreciate a, an upvote on this piece of equipment tonight. And also, as Don mentioned, the April 11th flood devastated our department down there. We have a lot of equipment laying on floors just waiting for adjusters to look at. The equipment that we have listed on the agenda right now will get us up and running again from a mechanical standpoint in the shop. We're currently sending tires and wheels out to have them done by local vendors. And the welding equipment in our fabrication shop is badly needed. We're doing some work up to the building right now. The installation of the air compressor equipment is contingent upon us completing our work in house as far as fabricating the doghouse. So my hat's off to my guys that they've been troopers through all of this, worked their butts off to recover and get us to the point where we're up and operating. I've got one crew, Mark's crew's up at the site right now. As you know, we own the landscaping and grading up there for the final site plan. We're well underway with the landscaping and also the grading up there. And my other crew, which is headed by Randy Roberts, we continue to do roadway recovery, embankment, and shoulder restoration. We've got, we had a tremendous amount of scour take place from the, the volume of rain that came down. So again, I thank you for the support from the board. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Dan, you have anything?
Just a, just a couple of updates. The, the pre-construction work, a meeting has been held and we anticipate work on Klinger Road starting around June 10th. And we also had the pre-construction meeting with Melee and Melee for Contract B. That'll be moving along. That's for South Point Boulevard. They're scheduled to start in mid-June. And we had the pre-construction meeting last week with Independent Enterprises for Contract A and they're putting a schedule together and we'll let you know as soon as we hear from them. That's it.
All right, thank you, Dan. Gretchen?
Yes.
Anything good?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Just good things?
Yeah, only good things then. You have my report on file, of course. This month was spent with just the normal day-to-day legal assistance in the areas of zoning and code enforcement as well as assisting the manager as needed, working on the ordinance amendments for the oil and gas ordinance as well as participating in the second night of the cell tower hearing in South Fayette. I do have as an item of interest for folks, there are two House bills that are currently up that PSATS has taken, which is the Pennsylvania group that manages townships. They've taken a position against, so I thought you'd be interested in hearing about those particular House bills and if you're so inclined to take a position on them or contact your House members, you can. And I'll just read to you from the PSATS announcement. PSATS said they have been fighting efforts in, by summon Harrisburg to create statewide zoning mandates under the guise of affordable housing. On Wednesday, two bills that do just that, House Bill 1976 and House Bill 2045, are scheduled for a vote before the House Local Government Committee. If these bills pass the committee, they will head to the full House for consideration. So House Bill 1976 would require multifamily housing be permitted use in areas zoned for commercial in municipalities with populations over 5,000, which would be applicable to Cecil. House Bill 2045 would require that duplex, triplex, and quadplex housing be permitted use in areas zoned for single-family housing in municipalities with populations over 5,000. So if you're interested in learning more about those, you can go log on to PSATS. They also have a letter there if you wish to contact your House members to urge them to preserve local zoning decisions to be local and not statewide. That's all.
All right. Thank you. Ted, are they on the fire departments?
Yeah, our volunteers have completed their hazmat training for the year. Every year they have to annually update their hazmat refresher training. So that's been completed this past month. As far as our steering committee goes, we almost have a set of bylaws completed for the merger of the fire departments. And an agenda item tonight is through the Department of Community and Economic Development, we're requesting a technical consultant and the board would have to provide a letter of intent for us to get that. It's at no cost to the township and that consultant will be available even after the merger's completed. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ted. Dan, Southbridge?
So we're still pending a date for the second CPR class for Cecil Township, probably most likely in July now. And we've also noticed an uptick in traumatic injuries. So it's summertime. We want everybody to have a fun summer, so be careful out there and try not to get hurt.
Thanks to Dan, I now know how to use a tourniquet, so take his class. It's worth it. And I have two.
Thank you, Dan. Dan, anything you want to bring up on the Public Works Building right now?
Sure. The update on the Public Works Building, good news this month, we're ready to close out the general contractor. Most of the other contractors are approaching the completion of their work. The biggest thing that we have to do right now is to get West Penn Power in there and there's some coordination going on with Morgan Contracting in their work along Klinger Road to get ready for the poles, to get West Penn service up there. If you recall, we need three-phase service to come to the site and West Penn, that's in their pipeline, ready to go. And that along with the final electrical work, waiting on the equipment to come in is probably going to delay full use of the building until sometime in August, but we're getting very close. There's a number of pay items that submits on the agenda tonight, as usual, but nothing out of the ordinary.
Dan, does the general have the responsibility for all the rest of the reclamation up to the, you know, the streets and the silk fencing and things like that?
Yes, and he's done the restoration of the pond already. That's done.
And right along Klinger and...
Well, Klinger would be Morgan.
The, the ENS measures have been removed. And that was done by Reynolds, a subcontractor to Yule. They removed that last week, so for all intents and purposes, Yule is done with their work. And I mentioned to Dan that there's actually growth in the pond now and they just put the seed in last week, so.
Good greens. Okay, thank you, Dan. We're going to get started on some of the resolutions and we'll get back to you, Dan. We'll need you shortly. For item 146-2024, consider the following releases for financial security that was posted for the installation of public and private improvements for the Traditions of America Development as recommended by our Township Engineer. Phase three was a, will be a total release of $75,667.42. Phase four, it will be a total release of $42,683.58. And phase five, it'd be a total release of $297,061.40.
Yeah, this is our recommendation. This came in a little bit late. Apparently they had thought that they had submitted this. There's been some changeover in the people that are running the project for Traditions of America. So they submitted five requests and we only are recommending three of them. The other ones, we're going to have to wait till they finalize the project, which they're in the process of doing. So we're recommending the ones that are on the agenda tonight.
Do we have a motion to approve these releases for Traditions of America?
I'll make that motion.
It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The motion carries. For 147-2024, it's to consider change order number three. It's for a revised scope of work for the general construction for the Township Public Works Facility to Yule Construction. This change order is for a total credit of $1,557.76. This includes a credit for items that were not required and not completed in full, which is the line striping and roof hatch. Also includes payment for temporary heating required over the winter. Dan, you have anything on it? It's just, I know it's just a wash.
It's kind of a closeout change order. There was a lot of moving back and forth between the general contractor and some of the other work that we gave out to the site contractor. But essentially this is a credit to the contractor and I would say Yule's done a very good job on the project and there's not been any change orders to think of on this whole project. It's been very, very limited. So we're in good shape and we're recommending the approval of this final change order, which is a credit. And then the next one up on the agenda is, is their, their final application for payment.
All right, do we have a motion for the change order number three?
Same move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Carol, motion carries four to one. For item 148-2024, it's for application of payment number 14 and it's the final for the work completed to date on the Public Works Facility for the general construction project in an amount of $233,371.55 to Yule Construction. I guess Dan just described that. So we're ready, Dan?
Yeah, I would make a recommendation for this. We have their, we have their bond for their, uh, final closeout bond that's required, the maintenance bond for, at 50% of the contract value for a total of two years. So we have a maintenance bond on the project and that's in the township's possession.
Does this motion to approve payment number 14?
I'll make the motion.
It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carol, the motion carries four to one. For item number 149-2024, it's consider application for payment number 13 for the work completed on the Public Works Facility and our electrical project in an amount of $24,642.35 to SE Schultz Electric.
We're making the recommendation on this payment. This is just a progress payment. It's not closed out yet. So just for work completed and in place.
Do we have a motion to approve payment number 13?
Same move.
It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carol, the motion carries four to one. For item number 150-2024, it's for application of payment number eight for work completed to date in the Public Works Facility for the mechanical construction project in an amount of $24,840 to East West Manufacturing and Supply Company.
Again, this is, this payment is recommended. It's for progress work and it's for work in place and complete.
So the motion?
Same move.
It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carol, the motion carries four to one. For item 20, 151-2024, it's the application for payment number eight for the work completed to date on the Public Works Facility for the fire protection system in an amount of $9,450 to Lyons Fire Systems.
Again, the same recommendation. This is a progress payment for work completed to date and would recommend the payment.
I'll make a motion.
It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Carol, the motion carries four to one. For item number 152-2024, it's a consider application for payment number five and a final for the work completed in the retainage for the South Point Montour Trail Connector project in an amount of $23,683.40 to Stewart Contracting, which includes a change order number two for $6,500. This was for additional asphalt work required by the State Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for accessibility to benches along the trail, which were not originally planned for. The final contract value was $11,500 under the award amount due to quantities that were bid but not required. This project is being funded through a state grant and county grants.
Yeah, just, just a final note on this that when you do a DCNR project and this had a DCNR grant, which the township was able to obtain, you have to do a final with them. They wanted this additional work done on the connection of the benches and you just do what they ask you to do so you get their money. So this will allow us to close out the grant projects.
I'll make the motion.
It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carol, the motion carries five zero. For item number 153-2024, it's, consider the application number 2024-010 for the Han Farms LLC consolidation plan. The applicant is Michael Dennison located on 334 Han Road in an R1 low-density residential district. Dan?
Yeah, this is, this is a consolidation plan. There was a home on this particular lot, which has been, now been raised. Now what they're planning to do is take away the line between the two and create one parcel that's about nine acres in size when you add the two together, over nine acres. They originally were planning to do, make this a farm and do horses here, but that's, it's under 10 acres, so it can't be used for that. And they didn't want to make any other changes to this lot here, which they own also. So this was back and forth a couple of times, but this is their final decision and what they're asking for. They've addressed all the comments. We're recommending approval of this plan with no conditions.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. For number 154-2024, it's consider adopting ordinance number four-2024, which is vacating a portion of Karen Drive contingent upon execution of an agreement prepared by our Township Solicitor. We had a hearing on it last month or earlier and if the board's ready, Gretchen has prepared an agreement. Mr. Stewart has agreed to honor the concerns from the residents about expanding the business onto, across Karen Drive on a portion that he abuts. So we have a drawing made up that shows that a hatched area where, areas where...
I put it up.
Oh, okay. That, that hatched area butts all those yards on the, backyards on this upper, that upper part of Karen Drive. So you have any questions for Dan or even for Gretchen on the agreement?
Yes, Tom, I do. As far as the part that is not being vacated, will Stewart make a cul-de-sac at the top of that road so that if Public Works gets up there with a snowplow, they go up Karen Drive, they have a place to turn around and come back down?
It's already up there. We already put a hammerhead in up there.
But it's not paved yet.
It is.
When did you do that?
A portion of it is paved, a portion of it was done by Ben Dodd. There's a, there's a hammerhead up there where we've been turning around.
Okay, but it's not, it's not really blacktopped or anything. I was up there yesterday.
It's reclaimed asphalt.
Okay, I was up there yesterday and I didn't think that it was big enough to handle one of the Public Works snowplows.
Yeah, we've been, we've been up there using, we haven't, we haven't been plowing the backside of Karen for a number of reasons. If you put salt on that, it's unimproved back there. That portion which, which we want to turn over to Stewart would come apart. So we would stay on the top in that hammerhead up there. We'd go up to the end, turn around, and then come back down. We've been doing that for the past couple of years.
Right, that's what I did yesterday. I went up, I went up to Karen Drive with the four residents, four or five residents on either side of the Karen Drive. And I was concerned from the standpoint that if we're going to plow that, we want to make sure that Public Works can turn that truck around and come back down and be able to stop.
We've been turning it around for the past two years up there.
Okay.
We've been waiting for this to happen.
Oh, good.
We've been wasting a lot of township money on that lower portion of the road.
You good?
I'm okay with that and also where they have it redlined off, we have an agreement with him that he's not going to encroach on any of the people's backyard.
Gretchen can explain that.
Right, so the agreement that I drafted and shared with you, you all would state and prohibit him from expanding his business into that hatched area. So we do need to present him with the formal agreement and this would be contingent upon him entering into that agreement. But that is the essence of the agreement, is that he will not expand his business into that area that is in the hatched.
And we have to please that as the township, so that none of that happens, correct?
Sure, I'm sure we might get complaints. Yeah, we would respond to complaints. It says right on the map, the business is not to be expanded.
It's what it says, but what I'm saying, as long as it's enforced, two years down the road, three years down the road, I know what it's saying here, Cindy. I do know that.
Well...
And he wouldn't sign it if he wasn't going to honor it.
Right, well, that's true. But let's hope so.
Joe Stewart's a good man and he's a man of his word. That's my experience with Joe Stewart. His intent has never been to expand up on his business up on that hill. It was only to benefit his business and help us out with maintaining that road, which heavy equipment's been operating on. None of the residents ever used that lower portion because of the condition of it.
Correct.
It's like Burma Trail back there, you know, so.
I wholeheartedly agree with what you just said, Bill.
Do we have a motion to approve that agreement contingent on signatures?
I'll make that motion.
It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. For item number 154-2024, it's consider adopting ordinance number, I'm sorry, just did that. Number 155-2024, consider purchasing the following welding equipment at a price of $16,136.88 from Air Gas to replace units damaged by the flooding of April 11th. The Miller 225 Mig welder with a gun and running gear, Miller 625 Plasma cutter, and a Lincoln 225 Tig welder. Don did request, because the amount was under the bid amount, he requested three quotes. He got three quotes and this is the lowest quote we got for these three pieces of equipment. So are there any questions on it?
I'll make a motion.
It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The motion carries. For item 156-2024, it's consider purchase of a Coats Max 90 tire changer and a Coats 1500 3D tire balancer at a price of $21,818 from G&amp;K Equipment to replace units that were damaged. This too, we got three quotes from and G&amp;K was the lowest quote. Any questions on it?
I'll make a motion.
It's been moved and seconded, those in favor, pardon? Yeah, we're seconded. It's been moved and seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. For item number 157-2024, it's consider the purchase of a Kubota RTV X1100 diesel utility vehicle for park maintenance at a price of $25,665.34 from Murphy Family Inc. in Washington. This is a CoStar purchase. I think Bill described the use we have for it. Do you have any questions for Bill about that?
I'll make a motion.
It's been moved and seconded. I mean, is there a second?
Bill just seconded.
Seconded, thank you. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. For item 158-2024... The motion carries for item one fifty-eight dash twenty twenty-four. It's to consider the purchase and installation of an audio/video system for the municipal meeting room at a price of thirty-three thousand and sixty-five dollars and seven cents from Smart Solutions Technologies. Again, this is a CoStar's purchase.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The motion carries. And just for your information, if you weren't aware, if you haven't been here before, those CoStars purchases are where the state bids the different kind of equipment and almost anything a municipality might need. And if they bid it, they supposedly, the state gets a lot better priced because of their bulk purchasing. And municipality is able to join and just pick something, equipment from one of their already approved bids. For one fifty-nine dash twenty twenty-four, it's to consider hiring Jim Pasher as a substitute in fall season park maintenance employee at an hourly rate of seventeen dollars. You're aware Jim's helped us for years. He was an employee. He retired from here as a, we always called him a master mechanic. So he's really great with our equipment. I mean, he uses it, but also he takes care of it, and we appreciate that.
I'll make a motion.
It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. For item one sixty dash twenty twenty-four, we have to consider rejecting the bids received for the, the fire engine that we had authorized last month. We have a motion to-
I'll make that motion.
It's been moved.
Why, why are we rejecting last month's bid?
Well, you want to explain that, Ted or Don?
Don, you can.
Yeah, the equipment received, the engine manufacturers were giving a varied, varying types of engines. So when, when we looked at all the bids in their totality, they weren't all bidding on the same engine. And some engines weren't available until three years from now, meaning the bid, what was the bid date, Ted, for that?
They were looking at about three to four years before they could build us a fire engine.
So, so a lot of the-
They were also put verbiage in their bids that they could upcharge us any fee if we had to go with a different motor in twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven, when the EPA regulations changed. So that's the reason why we want to reject these bids, so the township's not going to incur any surprise cost in the future.
But again, we're working now through CoStars again now.
And we're going to look through CoStars or Sourcewell, which are similar programs for purchasing a fire engine.
So we're starting all over again. We're starting all over again as far as the bidding?
No, we could potentially get a fire engine within a year to year and a half under a Sourcewell or CoStars program.
Okay.
Does there a motion to approve?
I already made a motion.
Okay, it's been moved.
I'll second.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. And we also need a number one sixty-one dash twenty twenty-four to authorize our township manager, Don Janusso, as the official signatory of the township.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. For item number one sixty-two twenty twenty-four, this is what our fire chief had mentioned. We need to authorize a letter of intent to the PA Department of Community and Economic Development for a technical consultant to assist the fire department steering committee in the merger of the fire departments. The DCED will provide the consultant this project for no cost to the township, and he's an expert at, at these kind of things. So a motion to approve issuing that letter to the DCED?
I'll make a motion.
It's been moved.
It's been seconded.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. For number one sixty-three dash twenty twenty-four, it's considered the board of supervisors' minutes from the May sixth, twenty twenty-four regular monthly meeting.
I'll make a motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. For one sixty-four dash twenty twenty-four, it's to consider the general fund invoices from May first through May thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
I'll make a motion.
It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The motion carries. At this time, we will go to just general comments for our citizens. If you have something of interest or a question, please feel free to come up to the microphone. But please state your name for the record, though. Anything going on? He's bringing- Should have thrown that out. We're getting new stuff. Now you want to shout?
Yeah, it's working too. It's great. Kevin Camerson, fifteen Swihart Road. Just wanted to bring up a few things, just for the education of everybody. You know, in regards to the oil and gas ordinance, I just have a few comments. I won't be able to make the hearing tomorrow night, or that's when you're going to try to pass it. You know, over ten years ago, the Board of Supervisors, which Mr. Cassiola was a member back then, I was a member back then. You know, we worked with the entire board, our township solicitor, and Range's solicitor for many, many meetings going through that ordinance. At that time there, you know, we all felt that, you know, that ordinance that we put together and passed back then was the most restrictive ordinance compared to the other townships around Cecil. Some of those townships' ordinance didn't even have an ordinance. They were just following, you know, the state guidelines. You know, Range, over the years. No. I agree that over, you know, a certain period of time, that industry has changed, and you need to look at different changes out there on technology. So, you know, I think, you know, the ordinance doesn't need to be looked at, which, which you're going through now. But, you know, it needs to be based also on some, you know, proven environmental issues or proven health issues. In closing, you know, Range, my opinion's been a good, good neighbor. They paved miles of, rebuilt miles of township roads. Matter of fact, the road I live on, Swihart, was completely rebuilt. You know, when I lived there, it was a Red Dog Road. Many grants and so forth. I'm not sure what those grants were used for. Local impact fees township received. Are they going to continue? I don't know. But, you know, that money was used for different things, maybe balancing the budget too. So that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Kevin. Anybody else have any comments?
AC Roland, fifty-two Sycamore Street, Muse, Pennsylvania. I just wanted to give a update about the Village of Muse PA Fund Day that we held on May thirty-first and June first. First, I want to personally thank Supervisor Frank Igizio, Supervisor Cindy Fisher, and Commissioner Larry Maggi for their support and of their contributions to help ensure that the event happened and that we met our primary goal of putting thirty life vac anti-choking devices into our first responders and police departments. I'm happy to report that we have all thirty units ordered. And once they arrive, I will be contacting you guys or either maybe coming up here, maybe getting a news crew and presenting it to all of our heads of these departments for a presentation for that event. Furthermore, I need to address a couple of issues and lies that were put out. I'm not intimidating. You're intimidated by me. There's a difference. I'm not mean or aggressive. I'm honest and assertive, and that makes you uncomfortable. And it's not me. It makes you uncomfortable. My presence challenges your comforts, and I will not be less for you to feel better about yourselves. To address the lies that were put out about me personally, I never slammed or defamed our fire department. The event was put on to directly support our fire department. And the post that was put was done for transparency purposes, and it was taken completely wrong, and then the haters ran with it, and they ran hard. The point that I was trying to make did not read well, and I'm sorry for that. To the point that I went on Memorial Day and sought out the fire chief. We had a great discussion. He understood my point of view and said that he was glad that I came to him and we straightened it all out. Frank Igizio was standing right there when it happened. We left from the Muse memorial service and went over to the Legion's service to, you know, address and honor our fallen soldiers that gave the ultimate sacrifice for our country. And I hate it that it, that it went the way that it went. I shook hands with the chief. We even had a couple of laughs. And I thought at that point, it was squashed, and he understood the points that I was trying to make. I'm a fisherman. I'm not a writer. Darlene, do not start that. I'm going to read this. In my view, we should have been, it should have been enough to stop all the lies, but it wasn't. I've always held Bill Shifoni and his family in the highest regards as neighbors and businessmen in our community of Muse. And it saddened all of us in Muse when I felt like they were run out of our community when JC and all of them were denied permits from the zoning board. But Bill, you and I and JC met up there and we shook hands. And at no point did I ever intend for anything but good for our community. And it baffled me that at eight, I called you two nights before, I called you the night before, and at eight o'clock in the morning, you had your employee tell me that you were pulling out. You could have at least called me, because you and I were the one that shook hands. I just, I, I don't even know how to explain the devastation when I found out from others in my community what was being said about me by supervisors, from your neighbors. And let me tell you something, I, I would never say any of that about any of you. Next, I want to address that there were two reasons that the fire truck that I never asked for was pulled from the event. Both were untrue. I was told one was due to church services on Saturday. When I met with Bill and when I met with the church and the diocese and talked to Sister Catherine, who was our liaison, it was firmly placed that on Friday, the fire truck could be there anytime. But on Saturday, it either had to be there before two or after five. And that we had to give it a direct line of escapement if there was a call to be made, and Bill assured me he would give us cones to make that happen. Sorry, I'm just a little, little hot about this.
JC, what's that?
Just let me finish, please.
I'm going to ask you, what's that have to do with the township now? I'm at our meeting here?
It has a lot, because it came from the supervisors, is what I was told, to why people could not attend the event. So that's why I'm addressing it here. So the second point is that the supervisors-
So this is a personal thing on me.
No, no, it's not on you.
Because bad things were said about the fire department, and that's the reason we pulled out of the event. It was posted on Facebook. No recognition was given by, to the fire department to say that, you know, it was a mistake. It was a bash on the fire department, and then after that, we pulled out of the event because we didn't want to be associated with anything that does not, you know, put our first responders first.
And again, that was totally taken out of context, and all he had to do was call me, and we would have straightened it out, because I went to the fire chief.
You can have that out with an individual supervisor.
Okay, fine.
His number is available.
I, I understand that, but I'm going to say what I need to say. The only people that heard our fire department in our township were the ones that spread rumors and lies.
Does anybody else want to come up and have any comments?
And the ones that took-
At the end of the meeting.
Took our transparency.
Anybody else?
And twisted it.
Does anybody on the board have any comments about any old business or new business?
I have, I have one more thing to say, Tom. You guys- You guys post on your website events that happen everywhere in this township.
Call us about it, eh? Call us about it during the day, please.
He said right here in this room that I was stepping on people's toes-
You have anything, Darlene?
-because Cecil puts on the events and Muse doesn't.
Any, any other new business, Frank? New business, old business?
Yeah, I have some business. Let her finish.
Thank you, Frank.
Wrap it up.
It's enough already.
Muse deserves to have events. We have an older community that will never make it to a Cecil event. But by God, they sat on their porches, and they enjoyed seeing the kids out there playing. They enjoyed seeing the events take place. And it's a shame that it was undermined through lies and from lack of, if there was a problem, you guys should have called me, because I would have straightened it out. It was taken out of context, and if something else needed to be said, it would have. I thought I addressed it when I went to the chief and addressed him directly. I didn't want to upset anybody.
Then finish it that way. I suggested. We please cut this off. Yeah, we are. Anybody, do you have any new business, old business to talk about, Cindy?
I'd just love to hear why the township felt it was okay to slam you.
If you don't go, um, we're going to end the meeting.
It's time to, yeah, it's time to close this down.
Okay, can I?
The amount that-
Wait, I'm going to move on. Hold on, hold on. If you want to end it, end it. I'm going to, we're going to move on. I have been actively working for a long time on grant funding for Klinger Park. And have the, the, I'm moving forward with that. I had a meeting a couple of weeks ago with Jason Ortizai. If this board is still interested, I would still like to move it forward, but I would like to change the, the scope of the project a little bit. So I would like your permission to work with Dan Dizeroth over the next month to kind of change what we do up there. We're looking potentially to put a splash pad up there if possible. It's something that South Fayette did and got a grant for. Jason said that he may be able to get something for Cecil too. He originally had asked about Cecil Park, but I didn't think that that was something that you would want in Cecil Park, but we can talk about it. But I would like the board's permission to work with Bill and Dan over the next month and try to see.
Our grants, we appreciate your efforts.
Okay, so I'm going to, I'm going to, we'll set up a meeting, Bill and Dan to, go ahead, sorry.
Do we have anybody up here that's using that soccer field?
Yeah, they rent it, and as a matter of fact, we're still having-
How much have we gotten so far this year or even last year? What was the total last year in?
It was around fifteen thousand dollars last year. It was more than the cost of Fairfield. I can, I don't have the number off the top of my head, but I can get it. We actually have more rentals this year. Jack and I worked together on this into June. Last year, they wrapped up in May and didn't really use much, but we have rentals through the end of June. In fact, Cannon Mac Soccer and Bedling Soccer have rented it four out of seven days a week. And then I actually just, I have to talk to you about it. They just reached out today. There was somebody, somebody interested in renting it for a soccer camp. So, and we have lacrosse and a bunch, we have a bunch of interests.
That's going to start beginning in September too, right?
Yeah, yeah, but it's a continual rental, so they'll take a break while the soccer offseason is in the spring, and we'll rent it out to anybody who wants it. And then they'll pick back up beginning of August and, and continue that rental.
Okay, my question to you, are we getting enough of revenue in to cover all the expenses and the, and the mowing and the fertilizing and everything of that field up there? And all the maintenance that goes into that field?
So we are covering the expenses for, as far as fertilizer go. Like all the other parks, our job as board members and the township are to provide recreation facilities to our residents, and that includes Klinger Park. So we don't charge people. We charge minimal money for the use of Cecil. Our goal isn't to make money on Cecil Park. Our goal isn't to make money on Lawrence Park. Our goal isn't to make money on Hendersonville or Klinger. Our goal is to, to allow something for our residents to use. Jack's done a great job over the past couple of years.
I agree with you there, but what I'm saying is not dipping into the taxpayers' money.
It's our property.
It is our park, Darlene.
It's our property. We have to maintain it, whether we have the rentals or not.
As long as we're renting it out and we're getting the maintenance and everything covered.
Darlene, we're not a for-profit organization. Our objective is to provide recreation facilities for our residents, including our youngest residents, which is what we're doing.
Cindy, do we have a total for what that cost a year?
To maintain? Well, it costs, what was it, nine thousand dollars for Fairfield to do the, whatever they do, the fertilizer and stuff. And then Rick from Parks and Rec maintains it. Otherwise, Cannon Mac Soccer does all the lining of the field. They put porta-potties up there. The garbage doesn't cost us anything. They provide the nets. And then Bedling pays us a rental fee. And they rent, Bedling right now rents it every Monday and Tuesday and some Saturdays and can, and Friday. And Cannon Mac, thank you, Jack, and Cannon Mac Soccer uses it for on Wednesday, Thursday, Sat, I can't remember, Saturday mornings, Sunday afternoon, something like, there's like a formal agreement. And then, but they don't, Cannon Mac Soccer doesn't pay a rental fee to us. They just provide in-kind services. So they do the lining and all that stuff.
Let me just say something real quick about Klinger Park. I view Klinger Park no differently than I view Southview, Henderson, Lawrence, or Cecil Park. It's, it's, it's a, a gem that we're trying to polish for the members of the community. That, that park is beautiful up there. We go out and maintain it, just like we do all the other parks, and, and we don't charge a fee or anything else for these other parks. I mean, it's, once, once my guys get in there, we start cutting grass, it starts looking good, we made some improvements up here, safety improvements for residents, uh, with guide roll last year to get separation from the roadway and the fields, same thing that we've done over here at Cecil Park, the separation with the fence between the parking lot and the playground, so...
I agree with you, Bill. I haven't been up there lately, so I can't, but when I was up there, the grass was all growed up between the bleachers and everything, the porta-potties weren't, and the garbage cans were just overflowing with garbage and everything. I just, I just don't want to see that again, and I have to say that I have not been up there recently, but I would, I am going to make a trip up there.
It looks phenomenal, and I just told Rick that. I was running into him the other way. There's no bleachers up there, so I'm not sure what bleachers you were at, um, that you saw grass growing, and the park has always been maintained pristinely. Now, even better since Rick's been doing it for public works, but that park has always been maintained, so...
But I got pictures of when those, those bleachers were put up against it.
There's no bleachers up there.
There, there was metal bleachers behind that building that the grass was growing. I got pictures of it, Cindy.
There's never been metal bleachers. Yeah, Kevin, go ahead, sorry.
Hey, Chair, I did one other comment. Um, I got some friends that, you know, in the township that have acreage, and they're all starting to get letters from these solar developers, so does the township have any ordinance now that allows solar in R1, R2, R3, or how far it needs to be away? I mean, what type of environmental issues, what type of medical, what type of health issues? Something to look at.
Ugh, we're just getting through oil and gas. Now, you're going to throw, I know, I know.
They're just, they're walking around and...
Can you give us like two weeks off before we start that?
It's a good point, Kevin.
Yeah, I mean, I seen, I seen, I seen the proposals that went out. I seen one of them, so...
Yeah, it's a good point. Thank you.
Frank, you said you had something, new business?
Yeah, there's another resident wants to speak.
Hi, Veronica Cross, Wildwood Drive, Upper Montour. I'd like to ask the question as to why Frank has to maintain our alley free of charge on Sundays when he's off? He should be home with his families. When we have public works, can our tax dollars go there?
I can't answer.
No, I, I, I don't have an answer for it. We just haven't thought around for that. But he's done it like umpteen times since it's been cleared open the first time from Frank.
That bamboo grows fast.
And he needs to either get paid for this...
Grows five feet every three weeks.
On his day off, or our crew needs to do it.
Listen, if your intention is to come down here and pound off public works...
I'm not pounding on you.
You can defend those guys. We've been busy...
I am not pounding on you.
This park's been redone twice already, so...
Frank has umpteen jobs. Why does he have to do your job?
All right, Bill.
He's not doing my job.
Well, somebody's job, cutting grass.
All right, Bill. It's not worth it.
I know they do, and he needs, he needs accountability for that. Somebody needs to...
All right, you made your point. Please stop interrupting her. You, you made your point.
I did, thank you.
Thank you. Frank, any...
Yeah.
My name's Matt Bull. I live on Wildwood Drive as well, but this has to do with the role, the honor rolls in the township. Who's responsible for those flags? The honor rolls where we do the Memorial Day services?
Over Muse.
One in Muse and the one in Cecil?
Over Muse, there is...
The flags look terrible. I haven't been down to Henderson or Lawrence, but is the township responsible for that?
There's a Knights of Columbus over Muse. There's a group of men I know over the church. I mean...
They've always been privately maintained.
I, I did buy the last two, and AC helped me put them up, but we can obtain these from our state representative from now on, I think, Jason Ortizai, instead of us buying them. We just, yeah.
Yeah, just...
And they don't last long.
Well, my concern is, I'm a veteran. I did thirty years in the Navy.
Thank you.
Flags are supposed to be, not pristine, but when they start raining on the edges and they start looking worn out, they need to be replaced.
We can step up and help, but please understand that it's not a township responsible.
Well, Mike, well, the reason I'm saying is because if you look at the honor rolls, it says the residence of Muse, the residence of Cecil. So, I like, I talked to Frank. I don't think Frank should be, anybody should be paying for it out of their pocket. You guys spend money like drunken sailors up here. You can't spend a couple hundred dollars on flags?
I, I don't think anybody, I don't think anybody demanded that from Frank.
I'd like you to defend that statement, really.
I'll cover that with my company, whatever it costs.
Thank you. I, like I said, I'm just, as a veteran, I have a concern. I mean, I know there's more, some people think there's more important things, but...
Thank you for your service.
Yes.
Thanks, Matt.
Yes.
All right, Frank, come on.
Yeah. Yes, directed. Dan, um, I just wanted an update. I know March first, we applied for some...
Frank, Frank has the floor.
We applied on March first for some permits for the Walnut Street Bridge replacement in Muse. I just wanted to see where we were at with that.
We expect the permit any day now, Frank. We're actually getting the specs ready to put it out the bid, so as soon as that comes in, we'll be ready to put it out the bid.
Good.